Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone at home, and welcome to the Board of Selectments meeting for Tuesday, December 18th. Great night.
January?
December.
December.
I did say December 18th.
I heard September.
Did you? Did you hear what I hear? Tell us a joke.
What?
Yes, pick it up. Come on, work with me. God, Jerry. Good evening, everyone.
This is a very serious meeting.
Very serious meeting. The first item on our agenda this evening is none other than Jerry Clark.
Look, I know that you want to get on to other matters, and by the way, just 15 seconds. I really have to congratulate you on surviving 20 years of dealing with all the personalities here in our town of Dover so successfully. I think that's a major accomplishment.
Thank you, Jerry.
I've given you all these papers. You've had some of them for months. There are four topics I want to cover. The first one is the most critical. We've talked about this several times, and that is the adoption of an existing Massachusetts Act of the legislature called Chapter 40U, which provides municipalities the ability in a far more simplistic fashion to deal with residents who deliberately violate regulations in an ongoing fashion. If you want, I can spend the time going through all of them. I'm sure you're familiar with many of them. You understand the problem.
We do.
But that has to be adopted at town meeting, so this is a warrant article.
Thank you for that.
The second item. Last year, very late in the season, I discovered a new program that the Baker administration under Executive Order 569 had introduced with surprisingly considerable funding. It was called the Municipal Vulnerability Preparation Program. This is specifically designed to provide funding to municipalities, and many small municipalities in particular, with what is not small funding, to plan and then to take action plans to mitigate the effects of rising temperature and/or other factors that are affecting the town. It's predominantly out of the Executive Office of Environmental Affairs. It is not public safety. It is two-step process. The delight is that it doesn't cost us anything. The first step requires that the Board of Selectmen say, gee, this is a good idea. Let's have you guys, whoever you are, go and create a task force. I would liken this to what we did with the Water Study Committee, where we formed a cross-discipline, cross-department task force of Planning Board, Open Space, and other divisions administratively led by the Board of Health, and we've been, at this point, fairly successful in doing what we said we would do.
Well, Jerry, you have worked incredibly hard with the other boards. We appreciate the time, the effort, and energy. We recognize this is something that you've put a tremendous amount of time, energy, and effort into it. Is there any way that we can give you our wholehearted endorsement, but yet rein you into the narrowest of channels?
Well, you could raise my stipend from $150 to $175.
That's too much.
I think Dad needs to...
Because then I could apply that into the 1,600 hours I put into town every year anywhere.
Next item.
So that, as I say, Item Number 2 requires execution of that draft letter that I prepared for you, and it does not encumber you. It does not cost any money. It simply says, this is a great idea. Go form a task force. Seek public consultant. There are very specific ones that the state will pay the money for, not us. We can become certified, then we can apply for action grants, which have run between $75,000 and half a million dollars to municipalities.
Dave, we just need to approve this letter?
You don't need to approve it. You're being asked to approve it.
We're being asked to approve it. Okay. So do we need a motion to approve this?
Yes, I would ask a motion that the Board execute this letter, which simply says, but with lots of backup for the state. That's, if you read the words there, they are aimed at the state, to saying you are in favor of forming this task force.
I will accept that motion to approve this letter.
Second.
Can you authorize the chairman to sign, Mona? Authorize me to sign once Mona has completed that said letter.
So we will take this letter...
Mona has the word of approval.
Yeah, we just have to put it on town.
I understand. The third one...
Wait, wait. We didn't vote.
Oh, you have your vote.
So we made the motion?
I'm trying to keep your schedule. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Third item. Third item. I just wanted to update you. You've been informed, the town as a whole has been informed, we've done wide publicity of what we've been doing the last several weeks. I was in the cemetery ensuring that we were where the cemetery trustees approved. I was in Carroll Park today. I put 31 miles on my carb on Friday, just going through all of the places of the 17 sites because Leverett Salt and Stoll would have otherwise laughed in his grave on anyone's thought that you could get from point A to point B easily in this town. But we have kept within our budget, we have kept within our time scale. We will be complete with the drilling and installation of these 16 monitoring wells. I have to give credit to Craig Hughes and the Street Department. They did a commendable job this morning of clearing access to the Dover Water Department wells, which had been overgrown by 20 years of growth, until we now have access to them.
Well, on behalf of Craig, I will accept your thanks, and also remind everyone that there are no wells on private property.
That's correct. The reason, I've been asked about that in the past, the reason there are no wells on private property is we will be testing water quality. God forbid we run into a case of any contamination. If it were on a private property, the owner would become liable to mitigate that problem. Whereas where we are a municipality, we do not have that obligation other than to report it. So that's why everything is on public land, generally speaking, in the seven-foot strip off the road, some places not quite, like in parking records, back in the woods. And again, every department has approved what we were doing.
Thank you.
And the last thing I'll just mention, last fall, the Planning Board Administration approached me on a topic that I had suggested, and together with Concom Administration personnel, we come up with a solution to deal with the constant request by real estate agents, residents, vendors, and the like, to find a means of giving them copies of these large-format, 36 and 42-inch-wide engineering prints that every single property lot has with them for whether it be septic, wells, other features. And it's impossible at the moment. I'm sure you've seen people, real estate agents, coming in with their camera and trying to talk, or more importantly, asking one of our administrative personnel to spend a half an hour doing that. So I have been involved in the Needham IT or Advisory Group, and in Needham, you've got to keep up the date, gentlemen. And in Needham...
I've read every word of the 1,700 emails you've sent me, believe me. When the Needham Town meets, I know you're there.
Well, the point is that Needham has been very successful, as Westwood, Stoughton, and many others, with a specific Hewlett-Packard scanner-printer that is networked. So I'm asking the Board of Selectmen to approve the installation of a network node. That is the only cost I'm asking for the Board of Selectmen to subsidize, a network node in the basement, or lower level, in the paper storage room. The entire cost of this is probably going to come in well under $7,000, shared between the three departments, already approved by the Chair of Planning, the Chair of Concom, and the Chair of Board of Health. We already have the money allocated within our existing budgets, and it will give much better consumer service, and that's the whole point. Thank you.
30 seconds to spare.
Not bad.
Thank you very much, Mr. Clark.
No.
No, there's nothing we don't...
Okay.
No vote is required.
No vote is required. Thank you very, very much.
Plus, I like your tie.
Do you like my tie? Will you please announce to the people at home exactly what your tie says?
Can you get my tie? Well, I don't know if I can crawl over here. Can I use that one?
While he's doing that...
No injuries, please.
Yes. Our next...
Can't do it.
Can I use this one?
Yeah, you can use that one.
I'll use that one. I want to make it clear to the viewing public, just before the meeting, John and Robert both said that they had made an effort to have their Christmas ties on, and so had I. I don't know if you can read it.
I can see it.
Thank you, Ray.
All right.
It's a Christmas carol.
Mr. Clark.
Thanks again, Jerry.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thanks for all your hard work, Jerry. We really appreciate it.
It's better to get in Concom Woolsey Flyer, which I did three weeks ago.
That's another town.
Updates, Mrs. Hunter?
So this evening, I am pleased to announce that we, you know, went through the process for an interim town administrator, and we have made an offer, and our offer has been accepted by Carl Valente. Carl was the town administrator for Needham. He then moved on to Weston, and he then moved on to Lexington, as it's recently retired. He came very highly recommended by all of the references I spoke to. Mr. Ramsey knows him well as well, and I believe they've already reached out to one another. We're very fortunate as a town to have him come in and help us through this transition process. I have worked with Town Council on an agreement between us and Mr. Valente. The agreement commences the day, the first working day after Mr. Ramsey's final day, which is December the 31st, and it extends through June or the earlier of June, or until we hire a new permanent town administrator. So we are very happy to have Mr. Valente come in and help us continue to run the town as well as it's been run for the last 20 years. I worked with Town Council on the contract. The contract has no budget impact to the town of Dover at all. It's a straight swap for Mr. Ramsey's salary, and Mr. Valente will be getting the same amount. He will be working four days a week. He has a commitment for Tuesdays, so he will not be here on Tuesdays, but he will be working here four days a week. And he will be starting on December 31st. So we've all seen the contract. It's a standard contract. It needs to be signed or executed by all of us, so we need to take a formal vote to accept the contract for Mr. Valente.
Do you have anything down there?
No, no.
So I would accept a motion to approve the contract as we have outlined, as Mrs. Hunter has outlined, and as Town Council has drafted?
Well, HR Council.
HR Council. Thank you. HR Council.
And, you know, it was, I did reach out to both Town Council and HR Council, and between the two of them, they determined that HR Council should draft this contract.
So, second?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, Mrs. Hunter. Mrs. Spring, anything to update with regards to Carol?
No.
And the only update that I have with regards to free cash is we are awaiting our certified free cash position. We anticipate that to be received between the first January and first or second week of January. We are, the free cash group and free cash discussion will continue. We expect to have an item for the warrant. We will have a placeholder for the warrant if you don't have the actual numbers prior to close the warrant. So that's a brief update with regards to free cash. Any other items that we are anticipating for? Next door, Carol, no other items with regards to updates? We've covered just about everything. We need to approve the minutes for November 21st, November 29th, which we have caveat on December 21st and 29th. Any discussion or... Bob, anything on the 21st?
Nope.
Seeing none, would accept a motion to approve first minutes of Board of Selectment November 21st. So move.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
And accept a motion to approve minutes of November 29th, Board of Selectment meeting.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much for both. We have an opportunity before I introduce our celebrity guest. Any citizens' comments, Joey and Camille? Anything you'd like to add? And seriously, Jerry, thank you for all the effort and hard work and everything you put into this.
That is a formal request for that to be a warrant article.
Yes. We are fully aware. I'd like to just take this opportunity to say hello to Jim Dolly, our former selectman, who's put tremendous amounts of time, effort, and energy into this job. If you had given me any more of an idea of how much time, energy, and effort would be in this job, I don't know if we'd still be friends, but we are still friends. So thank you for your help, your guidance, all your support from me and from this group. We're really happy that you're here with regards to this opportunity.
Shouldn't he have worn like a fire?
Ooh, that is a very good comment, Mr. Spring. Now that you have...
Your experience tells me not to.
Now that you've accepted the new position with...
Mortified engineer.
Mortified fire engineers. Thank you very much for that. And Scott, I thank for appointing me, Mr. Chairman. We're very, very happy to have you. So in this, Mr. Ramsey's last official evening as Board of Selectman, right on cue. Right on cue.
Do you want to deal with the Christmas Eve Day?
Yes.
Before?
Yes, thank you. One other item. We've traditionally, the town has adopted a policy recently where the townhouse closes the day before Christmas, and I'd like to continue that tradition and ask that we approve the closing of the townhouse on Christmas Eve.
It's Monday the 24th.
Would be Monday the 24th. So Dave, I think that's...
And the tradition is if it bridges a weekend, the day before.
Right. It's the only day between the holiday and the weekend.
Yes, so I would accept a motion that we approve...
Well, I think, I think I would have to do that. So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right. Goes with our times.
Well, I think it's a great tradition.
It is. Respect.
And certainly, a lot of people go away for the weekend, and it's... Right.
Denise, thank you so much. Denise Garland-Hurms, Massachusetts State Representative, is here to honor us and to honor Dave, and to, as part of our, as part of this very, very special meeting, of which we get to say thank you officially, formally, from not only us, from our predecessors, from the town, and also from your constituency throughout the state, and which is, Denise is here to... Give us...
So, if I may, I have brought a resolution for you. And certainly, Mr. Ramsey knows, is part of the way that the House of Representatives can convey their congratulations to you. And I personally believe that it is our communities, our towns, that make our state strong, and if our state is strong, we can make our nation strong. So the most important work happens right here in Dover, and we thank you for what you did and all the work that you've done. And I have tried to endear myself to people by not always reading the entire resolution and all of the weird ass...
Thank you, Representative. Thank you.
But no such luck tonight.
Ah! Jim, yes, please.
And if you'll be patient with me, it's a little lengthy, but it deserves to be read. You deserve this honor, Dave, and we deserve to acknowledge all of your work. So this says, "The Massachusetts General Court congratulating David W. Ramsey on his retirement. Whereas David W. Ramsey will retire from the town of Dover as town administrator after two decades of dedicated and distinguished service to the town and four decades of honorable service in local and state government. And whereas David Ramsey served as the town of Dover's first and its longest-serving town administrator. And whereas David Ramsey spearheaded efforts to enhance the professionalism of town employees by applying best practices in the areas of recruitment, competitive compensation, training and management, thereby creating and empowering, quote, 'Team Dover' and, quote, 'The Dover Way' to better serve the town's citizens and volunteers. And whereas David Ramsey, with vision and dedication, was responsible for the many improvements, including the creation and development of the town of Dover's official website, the establishment of its first professional information technology and website department, the re-establishment of the position of Superintendent of Streets, and the creation of the position of Assistant Town Administrator, and the facilitation of the functional integration of the Call Fire Department into town operations. And whereas David W. Ramsey provided leadership to the town accountant and treasurer-collector during which time the town obtained its AAA bond rating, consistently and prudently increased its level of free cash in accordance with the industry's best practices, and established and funded its open trust fund to ensure the community's financial security. And whereas David Ramsey, serving as Dover's Chief Procurement Officer, was responsible for the renovation of the Protective Agency building, the townhouse, and the Carroll Community Center, which will serve our town of Dover for decades to come. And whereas David Ramsey served as the town of Dover's representative to the West Suburban Health Group, the entity through which the town provides group health insurance to its employees to better control costs while also providing quality benefits. And whereas David Ramsey has demonstrated deep professional commitment to the town of Dover and to the citizens of our community, therefore be it resolved that the Speaker, on behalf of the members of the Massachusetts General Court, hereby congratulate David Ramsey on his retirement as town administrator of the town of Dover, and extend to you our most sincere wishes for continued success in all your future endeavors. And furthermore, be it resolved that a copy of these resolutions be forwarded by the clerk of the House of Representatives to David Ramsey personally, by me. Signed."
Dave, stay right there. Don't go away.
Okay.
Because this, the second part of this, this three parts involves not only Jim Dolly, but also Robin Hunter. And Robin, and this is an opportunity for us, together with Jim, all the selectmen that have had an opportunity to...
So Dave, we knew you wanted to go quietly, but we just... So, on behalf of all of us and selectmen before us, we would really like to thank you for all your dedication and service to the town, and your patience and education of all of us volunteers. I think it was 15 years ago when I first signed up for serving on the Warrant Committee, and I knocked on your door, and you gave me guidance, and you helped me when I needed things for school committee, and you've been a great asset and mentor, and, you know, we truly appreciate everything you have done for this town, and you are certainly leading this town in a really good position, and you should be proud of that. You really should. Nothing we could give you really is enough to thank you for all your work and service. But we wanted to give you a few moments to remember the town of Dover. So here's a little something that we hope you'll hang on your wall. Maybe you won't. Following that proclamation, I don't know. But, you know, we hope you will leave here and think of us fondly, and as I've always said, there is, there are a few opening ceremonies that will be insisting that you attend. Well, we're hoping, you know, maybe too. So, thank you very much.
Jim, can we get, can you come up with, and just, just... Come on, honestly. I know.
He's injured. Yes.
Dave, one more, just one little something. Bob, you get to do the honors. You get to do the honors. You know, this is...
If I do the honors, I'm going to tell the story behind this.
I won't tell. I promise not to tell any stories. Thank you for everything this year. This has been a tremendous year. There's been a lot, a lot, that you have done. We have done so much together, just in the short time. We can't thank you enough. This is just a little something from us to say thank you for all that you've done for us.
Dave, you should really get John to tell you the story.
But when you have some time.
But yeah.
Not on camera.
Not now. Might boost the ratings.
Oh, the ratings would boost, for sure. But thank you, thank you, thank you. And we really appreciate this, and we hope you enjoy it, and we hope that you get to use it often.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You will.
So Dave, we're not done, because, because Carol could not be here this evening. She's driving back from New York, and she wanted to make sure that I read some opening, some remarks that she wanted to say to you.
We're still on camera, you know that.
Right. So she says...
Dave, it's been edited, so okay.
So from Carol Lisbon, "Dave, I am sorry I cannot attend tonight's meeting, so Robin kindly agreed to read these remarks for me. It was 19 years ago when I first got involved in Dover town government as a Warrant Committee member. From that first budget meeting with you, through years of Warrant Committee, Board of Selectment, and Planning Board, you have guided, and most importantly, educated me and all the volunteer citizens of town government, policies, and much importantly, municipal law and regulations. While we volunteers come and go, you have been the steady professional, making sure that this town operates smoothly and meets the needs of its residents. You have mentored Dover's management team and created a day-to-day operation that is the envy of many other towns in the area. Your steady hand is evident in all that makes Dover a wonderful and special town. While you and I often joke that we can complete each other's sentences even when we have differing opinions, visions, and timelines, you have always been respectful, thoughtful, professional, and diligent in your commitment to this town. Thank you for your two decades of service, but remember, you and I have some uncompleted business. I look forward to inviting you to the opening of the Dover Greenway."
Well done. Very, very well done.
Do you want this good man to open this present? If he would like.
I thought so. We're not sure about your present.
Right.
So you should know there's a lot of women in my life.
Oh, okay. We're still on cameras.
There were a lot of opinions.
Aye.
We can leave it right there. This following instructions is something we ultimately end up doing well.
But John does push back a lot before he wants.
All right, Dave. Goodness, Dave, you're going to have to talk to this guy, that's for sure. Yeah, well...
You guys are killing it.
That's all right.
Oh, it's the cold that was killing it, not us.
We were going to get that cold this summer.
I will say thank you to Megan Jeffries for the rapping. It's good to have daughters. It's good to have sons and daughters, but most of the daughters have become professionally rapping.
She rapped both gifts?
Both, yeah.
Oh, she did an excellent job.
Tight corner, not how you get tight.
Really nice.
Everything I do...
Everything I do looks like a sack.
Those high-grade educations, Dave.
For your weekend getaways.
To be, Dave, to be used.
Maybe at the back of a motorcycle.
Yeah, you can backpack it.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you so much, folks, I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Not only Dave and us, but everyone.
Thank you.
We would like to wish all the citizens of Dover a healthy and happy New Year.
Absolutely, a safe, happy, healthy holiday season to everyone. Denise, also, thank you again, really appreciate you coming out to say thank you.
Selectman Dolly, in your injured state, thank you.
If I may, take two seconds? Sure. I would want to personally thank David. You and I have been side by side for six years, I was, three years as chairman, so as you know, once you chair, it's even a little closer. And David and I worked very well together, and he taught me how to become a, in my mind, a very good Selectman, in my mind. Plus, he has added more value than the townspeople in Dover actually appreciate, but I see that, and I'm sure you guys see that. So, when I heard David retiring, I thought it was a sad day, not a bad day for Dover, but we'll get someone like Mr. Valente, who's a fantastic gentleman, but David cannot be replaced, his shoes can't be filled completely, he's done that great job. So David, thank you very much for the years that you've helped me become a better person, thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Jim, thank you. Thank you for the minutes.
You good?
I'm good.
Do you have your horse, you know, ready?
Fifty more weeks. So, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I can let Robin do it.
I'll, I make, I, whatever.
Whatever, so moved.
Second, thank you, all in favor, we have a adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Safe, happy, and healthy holidays.